Finally.
It's a long time.
Still here.
First one ever, so very, very nice.
I had Jamie down here training now. He left already. I was training him.
Larry.
Well, thank you very much for all you do for so many people. I figured after 20 years, I probably should come and present to the organizations that have been so important to us. Last year, I did a presentation to the city councils at every community where we've got a site. So that was 12. And then some county commissioners were at one of them, and they suggested I do the county supervisors. And so you're second. I did Jasper County, so I've only got 20 left to go. So after that, you'll see me in another 20 years. This is really kind of a fire hose version of what's going on at DMAC. Oh, I was afraid of that. And again, just thank you for all you do. There are so many places around DMAC where you all have had a major impact, providing support, a lot of financial support to help DMAC do a better job of serving central Iowa and beyond. So I want to start by thanking you again for all that you've done. In addition to financial support, I mean, you guys are not bashful about giving advice, and we're smart enough to listen. So just thank you for all the many things that you've done. You'll see a number of things here that are familiar to the Evelyn K. Davis Center. Obviously, it's just knocked it out of the park. It's probably the best example of a model after the Annie Casey Foundation Centers for Working Families as there is in the country. And we've had great directors there. Ahmed Adjeman right now is just, I mean, he's a fire breather, just doing a very, very good job as we provide more and more support to people that really want to benefit. DMAC is 6,550 square miles, the economic sweet spot of Iowa, largest community college district in the state. There are 15 community colleges with legislatively defined territories. We have six fully accredited campuses and then five other learning centers. And actually, since this slide was done, we're opening a new facility in Templeton, Iowa, far enough away from the distillery, but downtown as a partnership with a number of the K-12s in that particular area. Credit enrollment, DMAC is by far the largest community college in the state. We're again, one of 15, very proud of the partnership we have. The 15 community colleges, we work together very well in many states. They sue each other over the distribution of financial support from the state. We entered into an agreement in 2011 where the smaller colleges that do not have the economies of scale receive more money per student than we do, but we're in a property tax-rich area, richer area, as well as having an economy of scale they can't touch. So we want everybody to be successful across the state, and each of us is committed to the entire state doing well. Each year, we serve about 33,000 credit students, 22,000 non-credit students. And we have students from every county in the state. Again, we primarily only recruit in central Iowa, but again, we have programs that other community colleges don't, so we get good coverage. Ninety-seven percent of our students come from the state of Iowa. Ninety-five percent of our students stay in the state after they leave DMAC. So I mean, we do very little international recruiting. We have about 60 international students, and that's usually because of somebody else's activity around the state that they learned about us, and they're here. So we're very proud of that, and we're very proud of the diversity. Twenty-seven percent of our students are of diverse backgrounds. And again, with the census data that we see and the diversity of this community and throughout Iowa becoming more diverse, we know that that's more important. We have a very large program in the high schools, college credit classes, the high school students. That's just kind of the historic graph trend like everything else. We went down in the COVID years, but we're coming back strong. Many, a number of students leave high school every year with at least a year's worth of DMAC credit. And we'll usually have 78 to 90 students who finish their two-year degree the same week that they graduate from high school and move on to be freshmen at some, or excuse me, juniors at some college, university. And we're very, very proud of that. Market penetration, as far as the percentage of students of college age that come to DMAC. This was a market penetration in 2000. Red means more market penetration. So clearly, as we have opened a few new sites, but we reached out into many different areas around our district to make sure that we're serving everyone. We want to be within driving distance of everyone. And of course, we're within computer distance of everyone because we do a lot of online programming as well. Academic programs, we have 226 degrees certificates and diplomas, 19 majors. You can see some of the most popular majors at DMAC, clearly things that are very helpful and important. Health science is of course the grant that you got all provided with us to continue to develop more healthcare professionals. But again, we close programs when they're either not in needed by the companies in our area or we do not have student demand. And as I tell all our partners, we don't need to make money. We just need to break even because we want to make sure that we're affordable to all of our students. Everybody loves DMAC students. We're the only community college in the world that Gornell articulates with. We're very excited about an announcement of a young woman that is going to be going to Gornell this fall. But we partner with all the regions, and we partner with all the privates throughout the state, and they all love our students. And when our students transfer onto a four-year institution, they graduate eventually at the same rate and same grade point average as students who started out at those four-year universities, which is something you'd hope to expect, but many of our students could not have gotten in as freshmen. So they come to us, if they need to catch up on anything, they get caught up, go on with their associate's degree and do very well. We're the only community college in the Midwest that Tuskegee articulates with, and we're very proud of that new relationship we have. We just finished our strategic planning process, and we're now in implementation, wanting to make sure that we focus on our stakeholders and our quality and our processes and our stewardship. You know, we run like a business, our faculty and staff. I'll put them up against anyone. They understand why we're here, and they understand that we need to provide quality education, and our students go on to do well. We have two high-level initiatives. One is DEI. It is a workforce imperative. I mean, we need everyone that we can find to get the training and skills they need to go to work for the companies we have in central Iowa. I mentioned earlier, we are becoming more and more diverse. We want everyone to have an opportunity to get the training they need to get into some of the great jobs that are available. And the other is Guided Pathways, which is a new national movement where we help students come in. Many students come in undecided. When I talk to new freshmen, I generally say, how many of you are undecided? Half of them will raise their hands, and I say, okay, half of you are undecided. The other half are probably wrong. Because I started out to be a veterinary. That did not last throughout my first year at Iowa State. I mean, you never know. And the more expect, the more you learn, the more you decide what you want to be. So we want to do a better job of helping students clarify their path, get on the path, stay on the path to graduation, and then have a high-quality degree when they leave us and are able to move on. So we're about one year away from being fully implemented of guided pathways. We've taken the 226 programs, dropped them into 10 pathways. So that if you're going to go into health, but you don't know what you want to do in health, there's a general health entry. You start taking classes, and then you decide whether you want to be an LPN, RN, whatever, respiratory therapist, whatever it may be. So you just funnel down and make that decision as you go on and get some experiences. Just a few of our college successes. Year before last, the Iowa Department of Education began to fund college and career transition counselors. We have great counselors in our K-12 system right now, but the ratio of counselors to students is extremely high, way more students than any counselor could probably have. And right now, so many of them are tied up with working on discipline, mental health, registration, et cetera, that they really don't have the time to do college and career transitioning and counseling. So the department asked the community colleges to take on this initiative. So we actually hire the counselors. We partner with two K-12s. Each of the K-12s puts in about 25,000 a year. I put in 30,000, and the counselors spend two days in each of the K-12s and then one day with us. We've had tremendous results, helping more and more students do their FAFSA's and make decisions as to where they want to go. Department of Ed says that about 40% of high school graduates in Iowa are not going onto college. I mean, there are jobs that do not require a college education, but most jobs, good jobs, do. So we're trying to help a lot of those individuals that may not have the support at home or the advising to decide where they want to go and then go to a college. And we're agnostic. These are not recruiters for DMAC. We help students go wherever they want to go based on their own interests. So we've been, we were funded for three. DMAC went ahead, and I think we're at 12 right now because we're having such great success with helping these students at the K-12s that we partner with. Many of you know Dennis and Susan Aubaud, Dennis's only degree after high school is with DMAC. He has been a phenomenal supporter of ours in our programming. He and Susan gave the lead gift for the million dollar, or the $7 million expansion to our Culinary Arts Program. This is one of our signature programs, known throughout the country. And as what I always say is, if you go into any restaurant in central Iowa, always ask if there's a DMAC chef in the kitchen. And if not, you should leave. Just kidding. But we've just finished 38 years of a French Chef Exchange where we bring French chefs here in January to work with our students. We sent eight students to France in May to work three weeks in French restaurants. I mean, we've got some, some of our chefs here in central Iowa have just had phenomenal training. I mean, they work hard. These are tough jobs, but our culinary institute's been very successful. Carl and Penny Moyer gave us the lead gift on a new addition to our auto technology facility. This was an ugly block building without even air conditioning, so we renovated it two years ago. I don't know, good to go back. Anyway, it's got a beautiful showroom, lots of great training space. We've been able to double the number of texts we put out. We run the only high school auto tech competition in the state. This is over 300 kids from all over the state doing their written exam, and then we bring them back for hands-on training and skills contests. Our urban campus in downtown Des Moines, the first majority college, students' majority, students of color, college, university in the state of Iowa, first majority one. We just finished a $26 million, and thank you for your support. Addition to this facility, we went from ugly block buildings and parking lots to some beautiful buildings. On the right of the screen is our new STEM education center. On the left is a conference center, meeting area, and meeting area for students. I'm most excited about the green space. We had more parking than we really needed, so we've actually got some beautiful green space there. So it really is and looks like a true college campus for about the 4,000 students that we serve on that campus, and that number will continue to grow. At our urban campus, we partnered with UNI. UNI at DMAC, they've got staff there. They contributed toward the construction project. So it's a two plus two. Students do two years with DMAC, and they can finish their four-year degree from UNI right there in that facility. Some online, some will be face-to-face. The UNI Foundation raised an additional $5 million. And for low-income students, they will allow students to finish their last two years at UNI at DMAC tuition. Tremendous saving for these students, many of which are sight-bound. I mean, even going to Iowa State to finish a four-year degree would be difficult. So we're very excited about that. Boone, we just finished a new addition to our athletic facilities and created a wellness center there. We finally won a national championship in men's basketball in 2021. We've come in second and third since, but we've got a great sports program. All of our sports programming is on our campus there in Boone, and there's our winning team. So I've actually got one of the championship rings. I don't wear it. It's too big to wear, but it's nice. So we've been, in 2022, we were second in the nation. Carroll Campus, we did an expansion there, new welding and classrooms and conference space. Pictured is Jim Knott, who was a prior board member and also provost of the Carroll Campus, serving a lot of the western side of our district. So that's been another opportunity for us to do more. And our Carroll Campus is also overseeing our new Templeton Academy. Politics aside, and of course, we see more than enough. We try to invent or invite as many of the presidential candidates on campus as we can so that they understand what a community college and what DMAC really are. So we'll have nearly all the candidates on before the end of the year. Homeland Security. In 2011, TSA came to us to create a Homeland Security certificate for the Des Moines Airport screeners. We did, we put it online in 2014. 2017, the head of TSA flies in, summons us to the airport, told us they were so happy with DMAC's online program that they gave us 36 states, 220 airports, 23,000 agents to train. They went from 80 colleges and universities doing training down to two and gave us 75% of the country doing TSA training, which was a big deal until 2019 when they got rid of the other one. Now they got all 50 states. In fact, this last year, for the first time ever, we had a graduate at graduation from every state in the Union. Many of them were TSA graduates. TSA pays for the certificate, and if a student or TSA worker does not have a degree, TSA will pay them to do DMAC's two-year degree here. So we've got 200 new TSA students starting their college degree coming this fall. So it's been a great program. And when I came to DMAC, I said, our real mission is world domination. So this is, this is pretty big deal that we've got the entire country. Cyber Hub, obviously cyber is important with everyone. We've got a great partnership with Iowa State in the Cyber Hub area. We've had a, we've got a two plus two with Iowa State where students coming to DMAC knowing they want to go to Iowa State can live in the Iowa State dorms. They pay a little bit extra money. They can go to all the events, but they're full-time DMAC students. Saves them money and some time, but it's a great partnership with Iowa State. The National Security Administration just named DMAC a Center of Excellence for Cyber Defense. You know, we got, we were breached in 2020. I don't think that's a requirement to get this particular designation, but we're the only one in Iowa. We've got a great criminal justice department and a great cybersecurity division, and that is a skill becoming more and more popular. Goldman Sachs picked us as the first statewide 10,000 small business program. It's a Babson College curriculum. We just finished the eighth cohort. These are small companies from all over the state of Iowa that come in and basically end up with an MBA in business administration, helping their companies grow. It's been very, very exciting, and the testimonials we get from these small companies as we help them develop their business plans, et cetera, has been very popular, and we're going to continue to expand that program. Kosovo, of course, we've got a consulate here in town. I've been to Kosovo three times. We've had Kosovo year. They love Iowa, and they love the United States. You walk down the street, you see Iowa flags everywhere. It is a beautiful country. If you've never been there, it should be on your list. They love Americans. The price is right, and they really will give you a good time. We got a million-dollar grant from the Millennium Challenge Corporation to bring 26 women from Kosovo here for two years, all expenses paid, to learn the energy trades. They graduate, this is the graduating class. Average grade point average is 3.8. Extremely bright young women who are now back in Kosovo, working in the energy industry as they continue to develop their country. Mid-America, we've got a wind program. We've got a solar program. This is the day Catherine Coonard, we cut the ribbon on a brand-new nacelle that was used. It's actually on the ground behind Catherine. This is a wind turbine that provides about 5% of our daily energy and part of our wind program, but it's only about 128 feet high, so it's no big deal to go up inside it. Again, there's the nacelle. Legislators have been very supportive of DMAC, Republicans and Democrats, and the entire community college system. You know, I attribute a lot of it to our connectivity to businesses. Every one of our programs has an advisory committee of the businesses that hire students out of our programs. We've got Last Dollar Scholarship, which pays the tuition in 58 different high-demand areas before students have to take out loans. We've got some great partnerships in various categories of funds to help our students. And we develop credit and non-credit programming. We understand many students can't spend two years, and a company can't wait a year or two to get a worker. So we've got short-term non-credit programming that does convert to credit if a student decides to go that way. But again, we create certificates in very quick time based on demand. Future Ready Iowa has been extremely popular. I mentioned Last Dollar Scholarship. We had over 2,000 students draw down over $7.2 million in state funding. They have to use their Pell, but before they take out a loan, the state will step in and pay their tuition. It's been very popular, and the goal is, is to help more students select these 58 high-demand occupations in Iowa workforce development. Comes up with a different list every year. We were picked by the National Science Foundation as one of 13 colleges to be showcased nationally for what we do in some of our grant work with National Science Foundation. It's a great way for us to see what the other high-profile community colleges throughout the country are doing, and we spend a good job sharing practices. The Lumina Foundation, which is the most significant foundation in higher education, picked us as one of six colleges in the country, community colleges, again, to showcase our workforce development programming. Again, the intent is for us to look and help identify better practices and then to showcase those practices to other community colleges in the United States. Of course, there we are. Amazon picked DMAC as the first education partner. They provide free college education to their associates. There are, I guess, almost 2,000 associates in central Iowa. So we're developing the processes so that their employees can go on and start, start and finish their college degree. But we were the first higher ed partner in the state of Iowa. Very happy about that. And then the governor gave us the million-dollar grant that created, helped create the Templeton Center. Google picked DMAC as the first community college in the country to showcase their software engineering certificate. It is a very high-quality certificate that they made available to, I think, 42 of our computer science students by now. The students get the certificate for free, and Google also pays them each $5,000 for going through it because they're test-marketing this certificate. The students all get a mentor from all over the country that works with Google. So it's just a great way to profile some of our students and give them an experience that they can't get anywhere else. So we're very excited about that. I mentioned Dennis Aubaud. He hosts a scholarship golf tournament for our college. We know that for every $1,000 that students get, their ability through our foundation, their ability to graduate goes up by 25%. For so many of our students, money is the big issue, whether it's childcare or a car repair. So Dennis has sponsored this golf tournament. All the proceeds go to DMAC. Last year, in a one-day golf tournament, we netted 480-some thousand dollars. So we're very excited about that. This year, we're going to try to break 500,000. Again, this is net, and all the dollars go to help DMAC students throughout. In 2016, DMAC was picked number 10, and I don't mean number 10 of the 15 community colleges in Iowa. We were picked as number 10 of the 1,700 two-year programs throughout the entire United States based on value. I mean, they looked at our retention rate, our completion rate, so we're doing very well. DMAC has the highest bond rating of any community college in the state, the lowest property tax levy by at least 20-some cents a thousand, and the lowest tuition and fees of any college or university in the state. So again, I say we run like a business, and we're very proud of that. Two years ago, we were picked as the number-one employer in the state of Iowa. We're very excited about that because we're great because of our businesses, and not only businesses, but because of the faculty and staff that work for us. So we're very excited about that. And again, Iowa State was number nine, University of Iowa was number 13, who pays attention to numbers, but we're very excited about how we landed. So our brand is life's calling. Our tagline is, it was dreamable, it's doable at DMAC, and we say, answer your darn phone because the opportunities are there. There are so many individuals. We've got over 100,000 individuals in central Iowa that have some college but no degree. We're going to do a better job of reaching out to them and helping them finish that degree because it makes a difference in their long-term learning capacity and in so many other ways. So we're very excited about that. And I did put in front of you, what's cooking at DMAC? This is something we pass out of our culinary program, so that's where the cooking comes from. But it just lists some of the neat partnerships that we've got. And of course, our partnership with you on the Healthcare Collaborative is also presented here. So thank you very much for your time. Be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'll see you in 20 years.
What don't you do? That's the million. What's, if you had a, you know, a crystal ball, what do you want to do in the future that you haven't done?
Provide more support for students. I mean, this mental health thing is big. We have so many students that want to do better. I mean, students of all ages. I mean, they've got families, they've got, transfer to all kinds of issues. More support for them on those life issues that prevent them from being able to accomplish their goals. We know that we need to start offering more evening and weekend programming for those individuals that are working. They're not going to quit their job to come to DMAC, but we need to provide more opportunities for them and tell them if they'll spend some time, we'll provide this education at a time that's helpful for them. So I think that is our biggest issue always. We're working with the Capital Crossroads. I think they're on 3.0 now. Tony Coleman from Broadlons and I were saying, you know, one big issue that we need to address are all the healthcare concerns that we, and health status of so many of our central Iowans. Health is a big issue. So we try to partner in anything that makes sense, but we've got great partners. I mean, you guys have been great. United Way, the Community Foundation, we would not be where we are without y'all. I mean, it just, it just doesn't happen. We've got a number of projects in the works right now. We're building a new transportation institute to teach commercial drivers. We've been doing about 120 graduates a year. We just redefined the program. We're now up to 250 a year, and we're going to do an $8.75 million addition to that so that we can go to 500 CDLs. Because even with autonomous trucks, you're going to need a truck driver in there somewhere. Dennis Aubaud just gave us a million-dollar lead gift for that project. We've got an earmark working its way through Congress. Congressman Nun has helped with that. So we are looking for funding to complete that project, but it's, the facility's been rundown over the years, so we need to bring it back so that we can provide truck drivers, which is in unbelievable demand in central Iowa. And then, you know, our biggest issue is, you know, intelligence. You know, our advisory committees tell us what we need to be training in all of our programs so that we're teaching ahead of the curve and ahead of their demand. Same way with you. If there's things you think we need to be doing that we're not, let us know. I mean, we can't do everything, but we try, particularly if there's demand. And as I tell all our partners, we don't need to make money. We just need to break even so that we can continue to provide education of quality, of quality and at a good cost.
Well, I appreciate everything you do. I know we've been great partners, and I don't know how the community would survive without you.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Any questions for Rob?
Okay. Thanks for your work, Rob.
Thanks, Rob. Appreciate it.
It's like, Ophiu Group, Whites, who's leading? Chris? You guys?
Tough act to follow there. They're doing everything. Good morning, guys. First of all, appreciate the time. My name's Chris Conley, General Manager of the Iowa Event Center. I think I'll kick it off just by introducing our team. We have Joe Wallace here from OPN, and then Mike Towesley and Jeff Clays from Whites, and then obviously Kerry Jackson, who oversees the running of our convention center. So a strong team. We've been going at this for months. The purpose today really is to present a conceptual design, preliminary budget to renovate the Iowa Hall of Pride into a junior ballroom, which would connect to the lower level of Hy-Vee Hall, our eight meeting rooms down there. And like I said, we feel like there's a need there. You know, Kerry Jackson spent a lot of time putting together a pro forma that if we go forward with this renovation, you know, we can show you guys what that'll produce. There's a need for space. The convention center's doing very, very well. We spent a lot of time also talking to Hilton about this, and they're in favor. This would be very complimentary to their business. So with that being said, I'll kick it over to Joe. He'll walk you through the design, and then we'll get into the budget and answer any questions you guys have.
Very good. Well, again, I'm Joe Wallace with OPN Architects right across the street. We're honored to work with Ophiu Group and Whites and present to you today. It's certainly an exciting project, and it's a little bit of an untapped jewel. There's a lot of potential down there with Hall of Pride. The space is in really, really great shape. It's been maintained very, very well. So we hope to show you a few ideas and some It's been maintained very, very well, so we hope to show you a few ideas and some conceptual design. We're happy to answer any questions. And then again, as Chris mentioned, we'll get into the budget. All right, so the first thing we did, we started looking, you know, at what is a junior ballroom? And it's sort of a junior ballroom maybe implies, you know, size or maybe something like that. Ultimately, we wanted to create a contemporary, flexible space, as you can kind of see with some of these photos here. Something that OVG and the Iowa Event Center can use for a number of different ways. They can program for a number of different ways. Also, one of the really big amenities that we have down there, if you've been down there recently, is all the millwork. There's some really, really nice oak down there. So we showed a couple of pictures here of, you know, how we can use that untapped resource there and maybe repurpose some of that wood, adapt some of that wood, so, you know, maybe in creative ways, special ways. Like that middle image down on the bottom row, maybe there's a way that we can incorporate, you know, some art, something that's specific to this space, something that's specific to Polk County as well. So the preliminary project scope, it's really threefold. There's the primary ballroom space, which is in the Hall of Pride area. There's the pre-function space. We're looking at doing some repairs, some necessary repairs and modernization of the freight elevator kind of up in the top left there. And then, you know, ultimately, I think we're all aware of sort of some of the struggles and volatility of the bid market and construction market, so we want to leave ourselves some flexibility with alternates, add alternates, so that we can really maximize our dollars and make sure we can bring this thing along, you know, should everything allow and should the pieces fall into place. So primary ballroom space, you can kind of see on the lower left there. We'll zoom into these in a moment, but that would be, you know, new finishes, new updates, keeping a lot of the same sort of character and woodwork and millwork that we have down there. And then on the alternate, one alternate one would be modernizing the finishes of those eight meeting rooms, kind of just adjacent, that would really be, have some synergistic needs for the ballroom space. I think, you know, Kerry and Chris have talked about how those meeting rooms would really dovetail really, really nicely into what we can do with the ballroom. And then, you know, the carpet, thinking about the carpet as another alternate, the lobby, the pre-function space of the meeting room down there is in, it's near the end of its life, frankly. So, you know, thinking about how we can do some new finishes, carpet down there, update some of the vestibule spaces and bring that along as well.
Chris, do you know the score footage of the master ballroom in the Community Choice? What is it?
It's...
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that's a great question. So this space would be somewhere right in between there, so it's, this would be about a little under 11,000 square feet total. And we've worked in, as you can kind of see here, we've worked in some flexibility with how we can partition that space as well. So, you know, Room A is about 2,700 square feet. Room B, the middle space, kind of the bigger one, would be 5,300. And then again, Room C would be 2,500 or so. And with that, we have a lot of supporting space. We talked about the pre-function. There's a conference room that could serve a lot of different purposes for OVG as well as the space. And then there's a new sort of beverage and production kitchen that would be adjacent there and then as well as, you know, a lot of the storage and staging and things like that are spaces that are really, really necessary for how they operate day-to-day.
So you'd have your own kitchen down there?
Yes, it would be a beverage kitchen or a smaller kitchen. And just thinking again about how we can start to be flexible here, you know, that's the key to this space is flexibility and adaptability. So we just wanted to show a few different room layouts and how it may be able to be used for, you know, more of a classroom function, as you're seeing, you know, on the bookends of there, or maybe more of a banquet or a wedding function, and these spaces could be used, you know, simultaneously. We're considering things like sound and AV and flexibility in terms of that, but you can kind of see just a few different layout options there as well. And again, you know, RCP, we were hoping to utilize a lot of the really, really good bones that are in there, so we wanted to be strategic with where we did new finishes. We're maintaining the bulkheads where we already have structural members there and then we would add some new ceilings and some new ceiling elements that would really bring the space, the level of finish up with this space to be able to be used for a multitude of different events. So what does it look like? We're pretty excited about these. We, you know, obviously the wood is a really key design feature here. We think that wood is in, it's in great shape, so let's utilize it. You can kind of see there's some ideas for maybe how we start to get, how we make this our own, how we make this place special for the users within. So you're seeing sort of a zoomed-out view of Des Moines and Polk County there. It may be something that could be CNC routed in the wood. Then the pre-function, looking the other way. Again, this would be a really flexible space. It'd be good, used for staging, it'd be used for cocktail hours, things like that that can kind of be synergistic with the ballroom itself. And then moving into the ballroom, you're seeing sort of a speaker, classroom-type function here. You know, the level of finish is something that, you know, we're excited about. I think it can be, again, a lot of untapped potential with what the space can do and how it can be utilized in a multitude of different ways. And then finally, the, you know, just one more image of sort of seeing how the operable partitions can be utilized and really, you know, create, again, flexibility. So looking at conceptual pricing, we have Jeff and Mike who can talk a little bit, in a little bit more detail here. We kind of broke it down into buckets as well, but I'll let Jeff talk about those specifically.
Good morning, everybody. Jeffrey Clay, Senior Estimator for the Whites Company. On our, look up at the first conceptual part of the estimate, the interior construction. For that $1.2 million and some change, what that consists of is we'll have some renovation work with the existing slabs. Due to demolition, there'll be some slab repair work. Also too, there's some new technology with electrical that goes within this slab as well. We also too, it's a part of the drywall partitions, operable partitions, interior doors, frames, hardware, signage, casserole countertops, backing and blocking. We also have some tile finish, acoustical panel ceilings, like they mentioned, the wood paneling. Some of that existing wood paneling is going to be reused. There are also some new components of the wood paneling that we bring into play, some wall covering, carpet, tile. There is some terrazzo in the center location that actually we're going to be adding new and then some wooden light coat trim. So there is some pictures that Joe had showed earlier that within the center part of the ceilings, there's a wood cove and we'll be utilizing some of the existing wall panels and that could create a wood cove piece. So a lot of neat additions within that interior construction budget. The elevator, so the elevator is the freight elevator that Joe had mentioned earlier that actually needs to be probably either replaced and/or repaired. It's a central piece to serve that area, so that is also within the budget. That's that million-dollar, 1.1 point, a little bit over a million dollars there. As far in regards to the mechanical, electrical and plumbing, we reached out to a handful of our partners, Baker Electric, Waldinger, and also two of the fire sprinkler. So utilizing some of the existing systems and then actually bringing in some new systems as well, so there'll be some new electrical feeds, handful of new diffusers and VAV boxes such as that. So that's going to be part of that $1,206. Selective demolition, that's basically kind of a surgical demolition. We are not coming in and actually blowing the space completely. We actually kind of coming in as taking a few components out that we need to have out before we build back. So that was a great way for OPN, they kind of did a nice job of having coordinate what could be salvaged and what cannot be salvaged. That brought the pricing down for overall demolition costs. So pre-con and general requirements, so that's our general requirements, please, which is basically going to be a lot of our administrative staff that supports the project, runs the project, manages the project, and pre-construction services as well for the $831,000. Then we have insurance fees, job costs of $278, $324. And then also too, since this is a conceptual stage, we are carrying a 15 per contingency, per se contingency, just to help with any kind of unforeseen conditions, probably market upticks that may happen during the design time, things like that. So for that's a $718, $647. So all those items can, are the ones that kind of bring up to the $5,509, $632 for the total construction costs. And then actually following after that, the project alternates, like Joe mentioned earlier, we have the eight existing management rooms at $531,088. We also too, for the new flooring and lobby and entrance areas, for $108,975. And then the, actually new finishes for $146,670, to bring us an alternate cost of $786,733. And then we also too, we have some owner costs, we have some owner FFNE NAV costs for the $25,053,073. And then also too, we're carrying a contingency and order contingency on that as well for $102, for a total of $2,155,727. So all of that together with the construction costs, the project alternates and the owner costs, we're looking at an overall project cost of $8,452,092. Any questions?
I just, is there currently places where could be utilized for back of the house ingress and egress or that have to be added?
It's actually in great working order right now. The back of house area is actually just a little bit out of our scope. We'd probably have to do some coordination with doors and work with these guys to dive into the details as to how the operations would be, but it's generally in good working order as is.
Do you know, maybe Kerry, so how would the flow work as far as people coming and going for events there? You know, we've gotten, become pretty accustomed to folks who are coming in and out of Community Choice from the north parking lot and through the main front entrance and where the Skywalk entrances, this being a lower level and that just the one small lot down there. How would that piece of it flow? Do you have any ideas about that?
The flow would probably maintain the same flow. I guess there are some, you know, X amount of spots in that, you prefer that IHOP lot there. Most people would either be coming from the attached hotel, you know, down the Skywalk or the same flow that they currently take to get tied up.
Okay. And that brings me to a question that I'll, that I'll, what anybody else has asked me questions they may have, but on the pro forma work, and I know, you know, back when we did the, put the deal together for the Headquarters Hotel, we knew based on information you were able to provide, Chris, what we were missing out on, some of the events that we're missing out on based on not having an attached hotel, right? We kind of ran the numbers on that. We had, we had a good idea of what the numbers do. So are you doing that same thing here? What events have we missed that we, that we could probably get based on the pro forma?
Yeah, really, our spot is like that 30 to 450 in attendance, 300 to 450. Right now, they're utilizing half of the ballroom, which they don't necessarily need to be in 14,000 square feet of space. And half the time, it would just fit within this new junior ballroom and those AV rooms as breakout rooms. So we're going to see two things happen, a little shift of what's currently in Community Choice going down to Hy-Vee Hall and then replacing that business with more, you know, working with Patch Des Moines on some of those regional and national events, putting those larger events into the grand ballroom through that 300 levels for the backgrounds.
Okay.
And that's the biggest, that, like, we don't, we don't have that size of venue right now. I mean, like as Kerry mentioned, we have these smaller groups that are going up and taking half of the ballroom and then all of a sudden they'll book in and we're missing out on a bigger piece of business. You know, that's number one. And number two, this is a much nicer space. We're going to be able to capture those weddings that are of normal size. Our ballroom is huge, even half, half.
Right.
We're missing that and that, that's why Kerry kind of ran some numbers. Where it was a little bit different from the attached hotels, CBP obviously played a big role in that, right? Like on the economic impact and some of the bigger events and stuff like that. This is really us shuffling things around. We know there's a demand for space and there's times when we look back and we missed out because it's a timing thing, right? So we're misfitting people. We're putting a smaller group in a bigger space and then we lost out on a bigger event or a bigger client looking for space and this would be a good fit.
And I think this also could help supplement the Hilton. You know, right now, we always work with them on, you know, hey, we need some breakout space, so let's put them at 300 level. And now we've got a ballroom right outside their door. You know, we can work with them to partner in those events. They can have access to that ballroom and you can have access when you need it, you know, just kind of watch for that.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, that was my biggest concern, Tom, was, and I talked to Kerry and Chris about this some time ago, is how does it affect Hilton? Does it hurt them or help them? And your answer was that it probably helps them actually, so we don't want anything to harm them, obviously, because that's ours, but if it helps them, then I think that's a good deal.
Bob, no doubt. And listen, that's, when we got together, that's one of the first things that we wanted to address. You know, Kerry works with Tamara really closely, Director of Sales, and we have a great relationship with those guys over there. It is absolutely complimentary. If they had concerns, we would have stopped it there, had some more conversation. They know it's complimentary. And I agree with Kerry, I mean, it's, we're already complimenting what's going on over there with the space that we have. This will be better space and actually closer. So I think they're on board with what we're looking to do here.
Right.
We know that.
Anything else, anybody?
Yeah, Tom, the only other thing that I would say too, you know, we talked a little bit about the elevator. Another piece in the FFNE that's driving that cost way up is just our dishwasher. It's industrial. We're using the dishwasher that came from the convention complex years ago. So, and I'm being honest. And if, so if we didn't go through with this renovation, there's two things that would happen. That elevator's going to need to be replaced. Is it $200 million? Maybe not, you know, if we don't renovate, but the dishwasher itself's over 400 grand. I mean, this is a lot of stuff going through there and then you add this piece like to our portfolio. You know, and the one thing we didn't talk about, as things stand right now, running numbers and trying to project what events we have down there, we're not adding staff people. This is pure revenue that's coming in for that space. We're out. We probably will outgrow and need some more people, but...
That'd be a good problem to have.
Great problem to have. We've talked about it. But I guess my main point is though, there's some things that are going to need to get done whether we renovate it or not, and that's why this is a good time to do it. You know, we looked at the, you know, the alternate pieces to it on that first level of Hy-Vee Hall. Do we have to do that? No, but it would be a good idea to do it. I mean, that's like an afterthought down there. It really is. It's just not, it's not connected to anything we're doing. All of a sudden, if that got upgraded to connect to this space, I mean, you see how it looks. We feel like it would do really, really well. We do.
What's the timeline?
Construction-wise?
Three to four months, is that what you're saying?
For work construction, yeah, 16 weeks for just the ballroom proper and then it's going to be done probably four to six weeks for the elevators.
But the elevator...
Long lead times on elevators.
Okay.
About half of the, you know, a lot of the period time here, the construction.
So when we say go, if we say go, we're talking 16 weeks to do the ballroom, did you say?
Probably, correct.
Okay, and then another...
Additional six weeks if you go to the alternance, which is the flooring and finishes inside the AV rooms and all that stuff.
Okay.